It is seven o'clock on Monday, January 8th, 2024, and we call this meeting of the Grafton Planning Board to order. As some members are participating remotely, we will call the roll. Mr. Hesseger?
I'm here, and I've asked Dave to chair this session because I can't be there in the room.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson?
Davidson here.
Mr. Wood?
Wood here.
And Mr. Robbins is present. Mr. Van Katramen has informed us that he would not be unable to attend the meeting this evening, so he is absent. And our associate member, Ms. Bresnahan?
Yeah.
Staff present with us is Town Planner Fiona Coughlin.
Here.
And with that, Mr. Wood is in ill health, and he would like to limit his participation to as little time as possible. He's requested that we, well, let me get our usual first agenda item out of the way. First, public input. If there's anybody either in the room or online who wishes to speak to a matter that is not on the board's agenda this evening, now would be the time to raise your hand on Zoom or in the room. Seeing none, as I was starting to say, Justin had requested that we take the special permit draft decision at 124 Westboro Road out of order because that is the one item for which his vote is required. Because we need four votes to approve a special permit. So with that said, let's see. Fiona, do you have anything to introduce the discussion of the draft decision?
Sure, absolutely. So this is really a follow-up. The board voted at the last hearing to close the public hearing and draft the final decision based on a couple of pieces of feedback that we received from the applicant and their counsel. Everything, you know, was agreed upon at that time and really checked out. I think it was, this is really perfunctory more than anything, that that draft decision was uploaded to the exhibits a little while ago with all of the, and when I say a little while ago, I mean, I should really say a few weeks ago, with the comments incorporated. There was one item that I would like to just draw attention to, and I did bring this up with the applicant's counsel in response to a request that they had made. I'm just going to share my screen quickly, if that's okay. Can folks see my screen for the decision?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So there was one comment that I included pertaining to the condition C6. Just at the last meeting, I understand that the board said that we could remove this at the suggestion of the applicant and their counsel. However, when I'm going, when I was going through the bylaw, you know, Section 4.3.1 of our zoning bylaw references the subdivision rules and regulations in terms of driveways, drainage, and utilities. So I just felt like it was something that I know that we originally, you know, the board did say that they, we could omit. But I just felt that it might be just to cover our bases of why is to include it. Happy to delete it, really not that big of a deal. But I just, because it references it in the bylaw, I want to just make sure that we're being as thorough as possible. As I mentioned, I spoke to Mr. Tallerman, who is counsel for the applicant. He had no issue with that. But it's really kind of the board's decision. So the following is proposed for consideration for the board. Except as otherwise approved or waived by the planning board, all drainage, driveways, and utilities shall conform to the construction standards and the subdivision rules and regulations. And yes, that's, and then, you know, just at their meeting of January 8th, after due consideration of the exhibits, et cetera, et cetera, the kind of standard language that we include. But yeah, that was my only comment and my only thing that I wanted to bring up before we close this out.
Any observations or comments from the board on that?
Yeah. It sounds like we ought to leave it in, and we probably have, if something does come along that's an issue, you know, they can come back and we can talk about it.
Right. And I believe that Hannah Jadovic is here on behalf of GFI partners. Do you know if Hannah had any thoughts or wanted to add anything additional?
Yeah, Fiona Haley is also on as well.
Oh, great. Hi Haley, sorry.
Hi Fiona, that's okay. Thank you guys for having us back. So I guess my only question is just, if our plan, because it's not a subdivision, in certain areas did not meet subdivision standards, then we would come back to the board and ask for it to be waived? Or how would we get that approved? I guess it's just my only concern, and at what point during the design and process?
Okay, so you're asking if some, if it's like the drainage or the utilities, for example, weren't adhering to our subdivision regs? How you would deal with that? Because I, I mean, I'll let the board speak to it, but I think, I think that they would have to adhere to them.
This requirement is in the subdivision rules. We have flexibility on a lot of modification of the rules, don't we?
Yep. Yep, I think, I think what we're looking at here is this is under zoning bylaw, Section 4.3 for major business office and industrial complexes, which applies to any premises having more than 20,000 square feet gross floor area. And as Fiona noted in Section 4.3.1, it says, "The construction of drainage utilities and roadways shall be performed in accordance with the design and construction standards of the subdivision rules. The special permit granting authority shall have the right to waive such special requirements." Yeah, so I think that's really, it's where, where, I mean, there's a couple of things that come to my mind. One is that some of the construction standards in the subdivision rules aren't necessarily applicable to what we see on this particular site. That is, subdivision rules and regulations cover a lot of territory with respect to drainage utilities and roadways. For the most part, the drainage is intended to be, in the subdivision rules, the drainage requirements are intended to be consistent with all the usual engineering requirements. There are some requirements that apply to the design of a sort of a typical subdivision roadway with roads and curbs and sidewalks. And you know, some of that just doesn't seem to really apply here. But a sort of a common, I think a reasonable approach would be sort of an implicit as applicable here. But if there are particular points on which the proposed design actually is in conflict with something you see in the subdivision rules, the planning board is given the authority here to waive that. Now, how we, how we do that, if that's known now, we can waive it as part of the special permit. If it's not known now, presumably the board can review it and as some sort of a modification of the special permit, whether major or minor modification. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I think we're fine with this condition. That this is fine. The more I kind of think about it and understand it, I think it's fine.
Okay Haley, because I was just going to make, you know, just to reiterate Dave's point that, you know, it would be, you know, I can just include language in the waiver section that, because it's waiverable, I can do that instead of having to come back and ask for a modification. But I mean, you know, it's, it's really, it's up to the board, but it's also, you know, this is a discussion, so happy to do whatever works.
Why don't we leave it be and get this done?
Okay.
We're in agreement with that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. So we'll do this as shown here. And is there anything else?
Mr. Vice Chair, I did not have anything else. That was my only comment.
Yep. Anybody on the board have any, anything else on this? If not, then I think the acting chair here would entertain a motion to find favorably on all the findings that were a favorable finding is appropriate, grant any requested waivers, and approve the special permit, grant the special permit with conditions as drafted.
No move.
I heard a motion to that effect, and I hear a second to that effect. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll put this to a vote, as noted, which requires an affirmative vote of four board members. Mr. Hesseger?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. That's a vote for in favor and none against. The special permit is granted. And all the usual, all the usual paperwork will follow from this. There being filing with the town clerk, a 20-day appeal period, and all that good stuff. And with that, we have the other draft decision. We have, we have our alternate members eligible to vote on that. So Justin, I know you had expressed a desire to not have to participate in the meeting any further. I think it would be a wise idea for you to sign off and take good care of your health.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
And thank you for joining us for what we needed you for.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
We'll go back to the remainder of the agenda here. Action item A, the request for extension of SP 2022-07/SPA at 16 Morgan Drive.
I am not sure if somebody is there in the audience.
Yes.
But I can do a brief intro, Dave, if you'd like, and just give a brief overview for some folks if necessary.
Yes, that would be good to get started.
Sure. Absolutely. So when this special permit came before the planning board last year, there was a condition that was in the approved decision. It is condition seven, that the applicant, after one year from the 20-day appeal period, must request from the planning board to grant an extension of the special permit for up to an additional five years. The notice of the request to extend the special permit shall be provided in writing to a butters within 300 feet of the subject property. And a formal public hearing is not required, which is why this is being addressed as an action item tonight in front of the board. Lastly, in evaluating whether to grant this extension of a special permit, the planning board shall consider whether the existence of the three pet geese on the subject property of 16 Morgan Drive has had an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood. So this was right, literally right before I started in Grafton, but the, at the time, I think there was a public testimony of the geese being kept on the property. The applicant was trying to follow the correct protocols in terms of getting a permit for keeping of livestock of this nature. So per the condition, they are coming back. I would like to make a point that we did receive a letter from an abutter that was uploaded to the the website, and I hope the board had a chance to read over it. I believe that that, that abutter was also involved in the previous, in the previous special permit application process. I did do some independent follow-up myself with the building department, just to confirm if any, if we had received complaints from abutters between the time of the special permit approval and now. And we had, the building department, rather, was able to confirm that the last complaint that was received was on July 14th, 2022. This permit at 16 Morgan Drive that we are discussing this evening was granted in, on December 16th of 2022. So so the building department hasn't had any formal complaints lodged. But I do want to give, obviously, the board a chance to ask any questions. And I believe that we might have somebody in attendance this evening who would like to speak to this, and the applicant should also be there as well.
Any, to start out, any discussion from the board or any questions from the board? So anybody in the audience here wishes to speak about this?
As the homeowner, I can. I don't know what the complaints are.
On the microphone, please.
Yes, if you do want to speak. Anybody who wants to speak needs to take advantage of one of several microphones situated around the room.
I have my choice. As the homeowner, I can speak. I'm not aware of the new complaint from Mr. Haddock, but you may want to fill me in.
Name and address?
16 Morgan Drive, Jean Marie Houghton.
Happens to be the person applying for the extension of the permit. So yeah, just in, in brief, the letter from the abutter sort of reiterates their their sense that they are, they continue to be adversely impacted by the noise from the geese. To keep a short story from getting long, it's
It's the same complaint.
Much the same as what we heard as we were reviewing the special permit application a year ago.
Okay.
A little over a year ago. Basically, the abutter is saying that the noise has continued to be an adverse impact on them.
So I really don't have anything to add from what we talked about last year. The geese do not make any noise before dark or after dark. They will occasionally, for 15 seconds, vocalize. Sometimes a little bit longer when we let them out and they're happy to get in their pool. They are not as loud as the crows. They're not as loud as the turkeys. And the distance between our house and the complainant's house, there's a building in between us. There's another structure in between us. So I can't imagine that if I can't hear them in my own house, which is 20 feet away from the cage, that he can be bothered by them 800 feet away.
Okay, so there's, basically, what I'm hearing is that there's really no new information here, that the one abutter continues to be annoyed by the geese. That hasn't changed significantly over the past year plus.
That's the way it sounds, yes.
Can I ask a question?
You certainly may.
So you said when they are let out, can you tell me what time in the morning and what time in the evening?
Oh, so we only let them out when we're home. So on a Saturday or a Sunday, maybe 11 o'clock in the morning, we'll let them out for the first time. They get put away around dinnertime for us. They're never let out, like first thing in the morning, they're never let out if we're not home. There's somebody always home with them.
Okay, thank you.
So Fiona, refresh my memory. Fiona's got her hand up, so maybe you're anticipating my question.
Sure, Dave, go ahead and ask your question, and then I will, I have a couple of comments as well.
Yes. My recollection, and I should, I read it earlier today, and I don't remember the exact language, but the, when the permit was issued, it was issued for a year with an option to continue, but the consideration of the extension would be based on adverse impacts. And so the question is, is,
Right.
Is, you know, do we have grounds for refusing to extend? Do we have, you know, do we, do we? And I don't know, I don't know the answer to that other than, I know what one abutter's answer to that would be. And the question is for the board, I think, is,
Please.
Do we have, you know, do we have, you know, what grounds do we have for either extending or refusing to extend the special permit?
Yeah, that's a good question, Dave. I think, I mean, the, in terms of the allowing, I mean, I guess I didn't ask counsel or anything about this. I guess if that's what, if that's what, if that's what you mean. But I think, you know, in terms, from a professional opinion, I mean, we've only received one complaint in the entire year from the same person. The building department hasn't received any complaints. The applicant has been following the special permit conditions as they are supposed to be. I understand the concerns of the abutter, who submitted the letter. However, just, just a note, I mean, the planning department hasn't heard from them other than when this, the 300, you know, foot abuttered notice went out. So it's, we heard from them during the special permit approval process, and then we heard about, heard from them when this was up before the board again. But in between that timeframe, we haven't heard anything else. I don't know if that, if that means that they've been doing something themselves and have been working on, you know, mitigating their property and the noise. But from a, you know, from, from the planning department's perspective, I mean, it's, you know, I wouldn't, I don't, I would, I would not have an issue with, you know, with extending, with extending it. I mean, it's just, it's one complaint from, that we've received just fairly recently. I mean, I don't need, you know, the board can obviously make their own decisions, but just from what I've been seeing, and from my perspective, and just reporting out from like a record-keeping standpoint.
Okay, Bob, you had your hand up.
Yeah. The thing is too, for me, this wasn't easy before either. I appreciate the neighbors' concerns, but it's the same complaint about the same condition that we made a decision about. Nothing's changed. So what changes our decision?
Right.
What I'm saying?
That exactly gets to
Where it was.
But that exactly gets to the other way I was looking at this. What has changed since we issued the permit that would require us to reconsider our approval? And basically, nothing's changed. So if there's, if there's nothing further, and of course, it's still open for discussion with the board, but if there's, if there's nothing further, if we're satisfied that we've heard everything we need, I believe Fiona, a vote, a vote to grant the extension would be in order?
Yes, but you see Jim's hand is up.
Yeah, just had a quick question. Has, in terms of the noise, has there been, I mean, it sounds like there was accommodations already somewhat made, so the location was moved to help reduce with the sound. Has there been any other requests? And like, is there any other sort of things that can happen to help reduce the noise at this point that's been suggested? Like, have we heard any suggestions at this point other than moving the location that could help reduce the noise?
Yes, they requested that we increase the plant barrier between us, and we did that with 10 trees last year, 10 evergreens.
Yes, as I recall, as, both before the special permit was issued and subsequent to that, you know, there were various, moving, moving the location of the trees. I remember that from a year ago.
Yes, and the cage has been moved down towards our house, so it's like literally right up against our own building.
During the, during the discussion leading up to the issuance of the special permit, we did arrive at a number of actions that you took to mitigate the impact on the neighbors. And all of those actions have been taken. And there's, at this point, there is no, we're not aware, or you're not aware of any further actions that might further improve the situation?
Not that I can come up with.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Well, just, this is just a simple action, a granting. It's not a modification of the permit. Minor. Okay. And it's, we're not in a hearing, so.
Right. It is not a modification, no, and we're not in a hearing.
Someone could make a motion.
The acting chair would entertain a motion, whatever action the board would like to take on this? Such as?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna suggest what the motion might be, but if you've got a motion in mind, go ahead.
Oh, no.
Now, the request is for a five-year extension. Am I remembering that right, Fiona?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. An additional five years.
All right, so.
That was in the original decision as a maximum extension.
Yep. So a motion to grant the requested five-year extension would be in order?
So move.
I guess we depend on you, Jim, to second it.
Dug in.
Since we basically have three members of the board, the chair normally does not make or second motions, so it's up to Bob and Jim to make and second the motions. All right, motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Mr. Hesseger?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
And Fiona will issue whatever paperwork needs to be issued to follow up on this.
Thank you very much.
Yes. There will be a letter from me, and I will be in touch tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, we now have an action item, action item B, draft decision on a request for a special permit, SP 2023-14/SPA at Site Plan Approval at 6 Grist Mill Road, DeSalko's. For this, Ms. Bresnahan, as our associate member, was present during the entire public hearing, and thus I will designate Ms. Bresnahan as a voting, eligible to vote on this special permit, which will give us the necessary four votes. So what do we have for the draft decision, Fiona?
Wonderful, thanks, Dave. So I am going to just pull that up, and I know that Mr. Soko is here as well. I don't know if he wants to say a few words after I'm done with my spiel. But basically, this was a standard accessory apartment decision. Let me just share my screen so that everyone can see what I'm talking about. The the information that was incorporated from the public hearing, the information was incorporated from the public hearing process and uploaded, you know, uploaded into the draft decision. And from there, it was, the findings were basically the standard findings, summarizing anything that we spoke about. The revised plan set that was discussed at the last hearing was turned into the planning department, and that is all set and confirms without any shadow of a doubt the previous area versus previous area. So that is great, and there was a finding made to that effect. Other than that, I had nothing to flag for the board. There was, the waivers are basically, you know, majority of the site plan requirements per Section 1.3.3.3, as well as a waiver from stormwater, earthworks, and traffic for obvious reasons. It's just an accessory apartment. And we went over this last time, but just a reiteration that this application will be for family members of the applicant per our zoning bylaw definitions. And the building department has zoning bylaw definitions, and the building department has already, um, provided comment on this and confirmed that it meets the definitions. Um, so when they go for a building, uh, eventually go for a building permit, they won't have any issues. Um, the conditions that I've included are the standard conditions that the town enforces. Um, and I'm just confirming, and, and the biggest thing to note, which was brought up during the hearing process, was condition seven, is that prior to the, um, commencement of work, the applicant will remove the temporary construction easement on their property, um, and provide evidence of such removal to the building inspector. Um, so I'm happy to give Mr. Soko an opportunity to, uh, address anything that he flagged as an, as an issue or wanted to speak to the board further about, um, and I'm also happy to answer any questions that the board may have about the draft.
Right, any questions from the board, any comments from Mr. Soko?
Hearing none. Hi, good evening, uh, Paul Soko, six Chris Mill Road, um, nothing, uh, no comment from me. I, I appreciate, um, the town planner, uh, accepting the revised, um, plot plan. Um, I, I think she uh, probably said it best, uh, pretty standard, um, application, and, uh, again, uh, I, I understand the stipulation of, uh, accessory apartment being for family members. I have no intention of, uh, I have young kids, no intention of leaving the school system, so, uh, I'm, I'm here to stay, and hopefully I can, you know, beautify, uh, my part of town.
Very good. If, uh, it sounds like maybe, uh, a motion would be in order to find favorably on all the findings, to grant the requested waivers, and to grant the special permit with the conditions all as drafted?
Second.
I'm, I'm not making a motion, I'm saying, I, I'm, I'm suggesting a motion.
So moved.
I moved.
I think I heard a motion and a second.
Second.
Maybe not quite in that order, but, yes. Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Ms. Brezner Hand.
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried by a vote of four in favor and none against, the special permit is granted. Moving right along here, it is actually just past seven thirty, and we do have three public hearings scheduled for seven thirty, all of which the applicant has requested a continuation. So at this time, we'll take up votes on the continuations of the special permits. Beginning with the continuation of the hearing on a request for a special permit, twenty, SP twenty twenty-three dash thirteen and site plan approval at twenty Indian Path, the applicant has requested a continuation to January twenty-second.
Move, we grant the request.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the board grant the re continuation request. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. Next, we have the continuation of the hearing for a major residential special permit and preliminary plan at sixty-one Maple Avenue. The applicant here has requested a continuation to March eleventh.
Move, we grant the request.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the request be granted. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Hassinger. Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
And Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. Our third and final public hearing is a continuation of the request for a special permit, SP twenty twenty-three dash ten, and site plan approval at seven Main Street. The applicant here has requested a continuation to January twenty-second.
Move, we grant the request.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we grant the request. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. These three hearings are continued as requested. Now, let's move back to the action items. We've already taken care of action items A, B, and C. Action item D, approval of surety estimate at the writings subdivision.
Yes, so, Dave, I, um, we've uploaded the, um, the paperwork to the, the, um, webpage, so folks can, so the board, rather, can see the, um, cost estimates from Graves Engineering for each, uh, phase of the writings. The, um, this project, the writings at eighty-eight Adams Road, um, the, the board will basically need to make a decision, um, to, and a motion to set the bond amount based on this, um, co- construction cost estimate. So the, um, sorry, I'm going through my notes here, so I'm stumbling a little bit, but, so the, the applicant will be posting for phase one and in hopes to, uh, posting bo- bond for phase one and in hopes to request future lot releases. Um, I believe that phase one is the only phase that they are seeking to, um, post surety for. I believe Steven Venakasa is on and can speak to that, um, to confirm. But that is, that is the planning department's understanding, um, and the, uh, amount that would be posted for phase one per the estimates from Graves Engineering would be the larger amount, so the amount that two hundred and ten thousand under the a hundred percent cost estimate. That is Graves Engineering's professional opinion based on the work that's remaining for that phase. Um, if the board has, if Mr. Venakasa wants to speak further and explain or, um, provide any insight, um, please do so, and I'll happy to answer any questions that the board may have as well.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Steven Venakasa, thank you. Um, I, uh, yes, we're asking for seven lots, uh, we've broken into three phases, and Mr. Uh, Mr. Jeff Walsh has delineated that on a plan as part of the, um, cost estimates. So, the first phase is showing the first color circle on the left, and, uh, five lots and two lots on the right, uh, coming in, and, uh, and that's what we're asking for, these seven lots in that first phase, and, um, I guess that's what we're looking for tonight.
And just a clarification that, um, and Mr. Venakasa can confirm, that the, um, the process for, um, this is that the board needs to post the surety prior to the request for the lot releases for, um, folks who may not know, so, um, once the, the bond is um, approved and, and posting the paperwork is in line, um, then the, Mr. Venakasa and his team will work with the planning department to release those lots. That's typically how this, this works, just for clarification. So the lot release requests have not been submitted yet, but they will be.
Yes.
So we're saying a bond of two hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Correct.
Is, is, is a vote from the board required tonight?
Yes. We have to set the bond. This, this is a little, not terribly familiar, coming along in this way.
Yeah, this approach is slightly different than what we're used to seeing, but.
Anyway, I move that we set the bond, um, for two hundred and ten thousand dollars for this, uh, section. Section one.
I believe I heard a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we have a bond release request for the off-site improvements bond for the village at Institute Road, now known as Woodland Hill. Not to be confused with the Woodland Hills plural subdivision that was developed some twenty or twenty-five years ago.
Correct.
And this is a, this action item is specifically a bond release request for the off-site improvements.
That's correct.
For which I will note that the Graves estimate is that there's actually five thousand dollars remaining in work on this. Fiona, can you speak to this?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so the, after conferring with Graves Engineering, um, it is recommended that the board do not vote to, um, release the bond yet as the cost estimate for the off-site improvements. Um, there's still, uh, thirty, actually, I'm sorry, where am I now? The text is so small. Thirty-nine thousand dollars, um, worth of work based on the construction cost estimate that was submitted by Graves Engineering, so that is the recommendation, um, from them.
Yeah, to be, to be specific, the, the Graves estimate was for five thousand dollars worth of work actually remaining, but the minimum bond we retain is twenty percent of the original, which is the thirty-nine thousand dollar figure.
Yes, thank you, Dave. Sorry, I explained that in a haphazard way.
We, we have occasionally been slightly confused on that.
And what do we have now? Do we have the hundred and ninety-four?
I believe, um, sorry, I don't have the, the original letter in front of me, um.
I have it right here.
In a second.
It was two hundred and thirty-three.
Yep.
Two hundred, okay.
So I think that, my understanding, Fiona, from what you just said, that from the Graves recommendation, is that the board would release all but thirty-nine thousand dollars of the bond.
That's correct, that's correct. Thirty-nine thousand should be held for the off-site work to be completed, um, and the bond should not be, uh, released.
Yep, and I, I noticed too, reading the, reading the progress report that was submitted along with this, is that the off-site work is in fact nearly done, and there's some, basically some details that really can't be completed till spring or summer.
Correct, yep. One of the, one of the items was the reflectors associated with the rumble strips, and the contractor recommended we wait just because the epoxy doesn't adhere in the cold, and then the other is just a small section of sidewalk, uh, from the crosswalk um, over lot forty-six, um, on Institute Road, which we're holding off on until we complete that lot.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, which is in progress.
The Graves list also included some looming and seeding.
Yep, yep.
It is, the, the, we, we've had an issue cooking about, um, water across from some of this to the, uh, people on the other side. Is there any implication in that, um, for, for this work?
I don't, I'm not sure who that was directed to, and I, I'm aware of the, um, the concern that DYS has with, um, stormwater on their site, but, um, I have not heard, nor have we seen any um, evidence that it has any relation to anything that's happening, um, as part of our project.
What I'm concerned about is that if it did, and we just gave up the surety, um, what would happen?
Um, yep, just, as, as, just as a point of interest, we're talking right now about the surety only for the off-site improvements. The whole rest of the subdivision, but Bob's question would, would have to do with, is there anything with respect to the off-site improvements that might impact this water issue? Right, Bob?
Close enough.
I know I can't reach your mind or anything, but.
Now, is there going to be a, a visit, um, like Wednesday, or, or hopefully, depending on the weather, to look at that situation, Fiona?
Yes, so, um, thanks, Bob. So I, uh, yes, there is, we're, we're trying to get something on, on the books, I mean, the weather, we the, the goal was to try and get out there to, um, when it was raining, or shortly thereafter, a rain event, to try and understand the flow patterns and just discern for sure if, you know, if, if the runoff is coming from the development. I mean, as Essex said, we have yet to, we need to kind of build an investigation and prove that that is in fact the case, and we haven't been able to go out there yet, so the, I know the construction cost estimate that Graves Engineering provided does account for and have line items associated with drainage and the infiltration, infiltration basins, um, et cetera, but I, uh, in terms of you, you know, I, I think we'll need to have, uh, a discussion with Graves, and, and he wouldn't be able to include any, um, line items that, uh, for that type of work or modifications, because we still don't know if it's something that we need to address.
Well, I'm thinking maybe we should, uh, put this off until the next meeting, which we'll have, uh, we'll have a much better chance of knowing what, what we're gonna know about that problem before we actually act on it.
Any problem with that? I think, that's, we're talking two weeks here, and, and hopefully we, we have a rainy, significant rain event predicted for Wednesday. So with any luck, Fiona, would we be able to, uh, you know, get things together for an observation on that? To try to nail down what's going on?
Yes, we're hoping to be able to definitely get out there. Um, I know that Essex has, uh, has been wonderful in trying to, to accommodate, and I know that a faulty representative is in fact available to meet us on Wednesday, and, um, representatives from DYS. I'm still waiting to get a confirmation from Graves. I mean, I'm gonna need them to, um, to confirm, but we're really trying to push for Wednesday, um, to get this, get this going here.
So I, I guess I just, excuse me, just for some clarification, what would be the um, expectation as far as next steps then? Is it that we wait to hear what, um, Graves Engineering? Because we've, we've gone out and met, uh, DYS on site multiple times throughout the summer, um, with their, um, their facilities director and, and walk through, and, um, at, at no point could anybody identify any connection to what they're dealing with, to what our project is doing. So my concern is, is what is the end here on this?
I'd, I'd rather have Graves, our engineers person, uh, uh, giving us that conclusion rather than it being me out there driving around, looking and seeing if I can guess what might be going on.
So we're, we're, sorry, sorry, go ahead, Fiona.
So I think that the issue, well, the issue is that, um, I, and I know that, um, Ulti and your team have been meeting with GI, DYS and staying on top of this, and, and kudos to you for doing so, but we have continued to receive complaints, and the building department has also continued to receive complaints. And because of the, it's the escalation of the issue since the last time we investigated it, we, and a formal request has, from DYS was initiated, and we do need to follow through with it, so we're hoping that once we are able to get out there during a rain event and just really watch where the water is flowing, and see if it in fact is causing the issues or is not, um, we can find, we can just issue a final report and just and, and move, you know, move on from there. That's, that's the goal. We were continuing to receive, and you know, as I mentioned, um, complaints from DYS on, on a regular, you know, fairly regular basis, and, um, because they've been fairly adamant that it is the neighboring development that's going on that's causing it. We do have an obligation that we have to, um, we have to confirm or deny that. So, um, we're hoping that, you know, we can really try and get this wrapped up. I know that, um, obviously, you know, you have been doing, doing well and, and trying to move this along. So we appreciate that, um, and hopefully we can, we can wrap it up soon.
Sounds to me like we can reasonably expect this question about the relationship between this project and DYS to be resolved before the next planning board meeting.
Yeah, and I, I hope so as well. My concern only is if we have a site walk and it's, it's inconclusive. Um, you know, if, and so what, what then? If, you know.
I wanna wait and see what, what, what the reports say.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, and if things, if things go as we can hope, that, that we'll be able to be, you know, to, to draw some reasonable conclusions before the next board meeting, then there would be, that would then sort of eliminate the you know, the, the question of, yeah, would the revised, you know, the reduced bond amounts be sufficient? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if at all possible, I, you know, would certainly hope that we can get that nailed down before the next meeting.
Yeah, uh, and I know that we're, we're trying to get, make that happen, so.
Yep, like I say, we're, we're, I think we're fortunate in having a strong rain event planned for later this week.
Do you need a motion to continue, or you, you can just do that, right then?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say we just won't act on these two requests this evening.
When you say the two, are we holding both the?
The off-site improvements and, you know, we've got a, a bond reduction request for the onsite bond as well. They're both, you know, two, two parts of essentially the same project. So I would, I would guess that the board probably would be, would be, have the same concern for the bond reduction on the subdivision as they do on the off-site improvements. Any, any, any alternative ideas from the board? I mean, I don't want to speak for everybody here.
Yeah, I, perhaps they don't realize the strength of the input we've gotten from DYS. We had pretty good issue coming from them very recently. And things were not handled well out there in terms of work on the road and so on. Rather perceive as, as we're discussing.
Are, are you referring to a, an issue related to stormwater?
To some of the off-site, off-site work, like closing the road so that the people couldn't go in there, or at least that's what the town published.
Uh, that, that, I'm sorry, that, that piece is new to me. I know that there was confusion recently on an event where we had requested a, a police detail only to monitor traffic when we were putting in the rumble strips and DYS raised a lot of alarms because they thought we were closing the roadway and I received the call from the chief of police and apparently the dispatcher had misrepresented it as a road closure as opposed to actually what we were doing. But I didn't realize there were other issues.
But created quite a, quite a hurrah.
Which essentially was over, over a miscommunication with the police dispatcher though.
Well. Just assume wait two weeks.
Okay.
We'll, we'll bump these to the January twenty-second agenda and with the expectation that it will become, it will become a routine matter by then.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are we also gonna bump the project update?
Well, while you're here, although maybe some of us have read the project update, but I, I think we'd be, you know, the board would probably like to hear it and the public as well who either are attending the meeting or will be watching it.
Tonight or the next one?
Yeah. Tonight, tonight would be perfectly good for a project update.
Okay.
Probably won't change much in two weeks, but.
Yeah, I don't think so. So the off-site, I think we've pretty much covered the, you know, ninety-nine percent of the work is completed on the off-site, other than the, the reflectors associated with the rumble strips and that small section of sidewalk. Otherwise, the, the off-site's complete. As far as onsite, all the interior roadways have been completed with the binder course. Other than curb, some of the curb inlets, all the granite is in place. Catch basins and sewer manholes are raised to final height. Sorry, drainage manholes, the sewer manholes will be brought up prior to paving, obviously. We've got about, I'd say roughly a third of the sidewalks installed, including approximately ninety percent of adrenin, which has got its sidewalks in. Water and sewer, all the main lines and connections have been completed, installed. Drainage, all the subsurface infrastructure has been installed, majority of the catch basins and manholes are complete. The, just the remaining granite curb inlets and then the berming associated with the final work is remaining. The drainage basins have been shaped. Their slopes are vegetated and they're currently being used as BMPs and they will be cleaned and finalized towards the end of the project. So they're only receiving clean water. When final, electric has been pulled throughout the entire subdivision. Challenges with grid are related to transformers at this point, supply essentially. But the wire has been pulled throughout the entire subdivision and right now it's not holding anything up other than a couple of weeks here and there. Additionally, cable, the, the Verizon conduit has been pulled throughout Verizon's kind of moving section by section, but the conduit is, is in. And we are advancing the construction of homes and finalizing the lots, you know, as, as proposed and programmed and we're I'd say a little over halfway through as far as the construction of the homes.
Bob?
Question. You mentioned Verizon. What about Greater Media, whoever they are now, Spectrum?
Verizon is the only one being offered in, in this subdivision.
Well, I've been on the cable committee since the first license was issued and one of the conditions in the town was that cable, any cable company had to offer cable everywhere. So I'm a little concerned about that. I haven't heard anything about it one way or another.
I guess I'm not sure. So cable is being offered through Verizon?
No.
No.
Verizon has to offer cable everywhere and Greater Media has to offer cable everywhere. Now, I don't know. This hasn't come up in quite a long while, so. I don't know. But it just concerns me.
Don't know that. I don't know anything about that particular topic, but.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah, the question would be whether charter is required or whether the subdivisionary is required to include charter in their cable offering. Unlike a lot of towns, we do have effectively two cable companies. But yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to look at the, the, the contracts the town has with each of the companies to, you know.
I'm not sure whether that's still still being included in the, in the contracts. In any case, they would be needing to talk to the developers about it. It just caught my eye.
Yep. Yeah, I don't, strictly speaking, it's not a planning board issue, but.
Yeah, this is the first that I've heard of it.
Yep, well, Bob, Bob pays attention to things like that because he said he's been on the cable advisory committee for just about forever.
Yep.
No, just since the summer of eighty-four.
Okay, anything else on this? Any other questions for Essex? They do seem to be making good progress and I think it's, on the basis of all that progress you've mentioned that Graves has, you know, produced a revised, you know, a bond reduction estimate that basically reflects the work that you've already done.
Yep, yep.
Which hopefully we'll nail that next time.
Yes, exactly. And we'll nail down that meeting with, with DYS and, and Graves and finalize that. Yep.
Good. Anything else on this?
I guess just wanted to confirm that that update satisfies the condition from our previous decision?
As far as I can tell.
Okay, excellent.
The planning department agrees that that's a satisfactory update in terms of our records.
Excellent, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yep.
Thank you, Essex.
All right, we have one more action item here. Project phasing and surety estimate approvals for Abbey Woods. What's up with that, Fiona?
Yes, so I don't believe that Mr. Rad is here and I'm not, actually, I, he's, I think he was planning on attending, but I do not see him. And I, but I will give an overview and if he jumps on or if he's on and I can't see him, I'll let him have a chance to speak. But essentially the board needs to make a motion this evening to accept the phasing of the project, the prod, and then in addition to that, make a motion to set the bond amount based on the recommendations made by Graves Engineering and their cost estimates, which were uploaded to the webpage. So Ms., Mr. Rad, who is a developer, Abbey Woods subdivision, is proposing to phase the project into two, two phases. For purposes of this discussion, I'm gonna refer to them as sections one and two, as that's how they are referred to in the cost estimate report. So I just wanted to make a comment that we, you know, understanding that progress has been a little bit on the slower side with this subdivision, we're trying our best to make, to work with Mr. Rad and the development team to move this along. And by phasing the project, the hope is that we will in fact be able to move, you know, move faster and rectify, you know, the issues at the site and get, you know, bond posted and get some more lots released so they can, they can progress. I did speak to Mr. Walsh about this and he said, you know, there's binder asphalt on the entire roadway and you can drive through in and out. So he doesn't have a lot of concerns and, and nor do I about kind of physical turnaround access or anything like that. For both sections. So there's provisions for turnaround for both phases, so it's not as if there's going to be, you know, the fire and safety can get in and out adequately. I know that that was something that was brought up in the past with phasing projects and making sure that those parameters are in place before phasing is agreed upon. So I just wanted to confirm, you know, let the board know that. I've consulted with Graves and from their perspective and from mine, it's, it's looking good. So I don't see, you know, any problems with, with phasing, but I'll have the board, allow the board to ask me any questions about the phasing specifically and then I'll explain the cost estimates from there. So, because there's, there's two motions that we need to do this evening, so. Yeah, happy to answer any questions about the phasing portion.
How many units are in each of the two phases?
There are. I believe there's all together. Section one consists of Abbey Road between, oh geez. Very technical engineering terminology here. Sorry, bear with me for one second. I should have confirmed this before. It's basically properties, property lines with the eastern property line for lots two and eight. I don't have a attached plan as part of this cost estimate so that we can, two lots have been released already of the total. Let me, um, let me pull up my, sorry, sorry folks.
Well,
I'm.
Station zero to three plus twenty-three. The first three hundred and twenty-three feet of the road, which is less than five hundred, which is about, well, I, I think this will end up, when there's a big subdivision, we limit how, how far, how long a, a dead end they can have under development. But that's, I don't think that's the case. I don't think that's an issue here.
No, I think, in, in terms of the lots, it looks like this, this phase one is the first five lots. Lots one, two, eight, nine, and ten. It's the first five lots going in from Carroll Road. Three out of one side and two on the other.
And how many more of them? There's, there's a good many more.
There's ten lots in total that were approved. So this is basically, and I believe we released, we, there was lot releases submitted for
Did we release lots one and two maybe?
One and two, yes. One and two, sorry. I'm trying to bounce around between all my different files.
Yeah, so I think.
And in any event, two lots have been released and the, the, this cost, this cost estimate and phasing breakdown ultimately breaks the, the last remaining lots in half.
Yeah.
That was how, that was my understanding of it.
Yeah, so, right, so the phasing altogether, the phasing proposal here is for five and five lots. Five lots first phase, five lots second phase. And of the five lots in the first phase, two of them have already been released.
Yes, that's correct. So that's, yeah, that's all I have in terms of the, the phasing. It's just really to help move the project along.
Yeah, but over the years, there have been projects that stopped moving along and left kind of disastrous situations. Maybe wasn't an ability to say put in a cul-de-sac on short distance or that sort of thing. I, I'm just not sure whether we're covering all that.
So.
And but, go ahead, Dave.
Fiona, did I hear you say that the entire length of the road has the binder?
Binder asphalt. The entire roadway has binder asphalt. And I mean, obviously, you know, the planning department and the board will work together to make sure that the the street will have the proper surety in place before any future lot, lots are released. So you know, that's just, just another, I mean, I understand Bob's concern and it's about, it's definitely a valid one, but I just wanted to just underscore that for the board, you know, we'll be, we'll be keeping a vigilant and diligent eye on, on this. You know, we obviously don't want to have a situation where you know, we're, we're, we're doing things, you know, incorrectly. We've actually been kind of extra vigilant about this particular project to make sure that they're, they're doing everything correctly.
We're being asked to approve this two sections and to
And and to set the bond amount. So the, the bond amount would be for section one would be a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Let me just,
Yes.
A hundred and thirty-six thousand based on the remaining construction work for section one. So that's the higher of the two estimates provided. So the hundred and thirty-six thousand would be posted, posted for section one and the a hundred, sorry, two hundred and ten thousand would be posted for section two, because again, that is the, the remaining construction work that's required is more than the total.
So we're being asked for three things. Approve of the phasing, approve the bond, the, the, the bond of a hundred and thirty-six thousand for phase one, section one, and two hundred and ten thousand for section two. And these are all of the, the two dollar amount estimates are the, to cover all of the work that remains in its connection with both sections.
So, so we're getting bond on both of them? So that there'd be money to, to finish pave the whole thing back to the cul-de-sac? Should, should something go really wrong? True?
That's what it sounds like to me.
Yep.
I remember we do those things.
Second.
All right, moved in second and that the board approved the phasing. All right, moved in second that the board approved the phasing, approve one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in bond for section one and two hundred and ten thousand dollars bond for section two. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Excellent. Moved in second, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye, motion carried unanimously. Brings us to the completion of all our action items. Under general business, I believe we have some bills.
Yes, I will share my screen, Dave, so you can see. Just three, I believe, yes, three, all from Graves Engineering.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second that the board pays bills, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye, motion carried unanimously. We do not have any minutes of previous meetings. What do we have for staff report?
Yeah, so for staff report, I am, so really the focus in the department between the two of us has been getting through the applications, the, a lot of, a lot of public inquiries lately, a lot of technical assistance, like independent research projects based on, you know, inquiries made by the public pertaining to applications in front of the board, et cetera, et cetera. So that's really been our focus, taking up the majority of our time also with the holidays. It's obviously been challenging to, to coordinate and do some of like the larger scale, bigger picture items, but we're moving along and everything, you know, all is well. But I wanted to just highlight a couple of things that don't have to do with the kind of day-to-day administrative and applications related items, which is we got our initial approval from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for our housing production plan, which was great. We're, and that's, we'll, we'll be, they'll be in contact with us with a final approval and some comments hopefully soon. I will be coordinating with the housing production plan consultant if there's anything significant that needs changing. But hopefully that will be a smooth process. Our consultant has been, our consultant for a very long time and does a ton of housing production plans, so we're hoping that that will go smoothly enough. I worked with the DPW and our GMA agent, our Grafton Emergency Management Agent, agent, to agency agent, to submit a, for a brick grant, so a building resilient infrastructure and capacity, I believe, grant that was submitted today. So it was, I know that I did update the board on that last time, but there was a lot more movement lately and we're, we coordinated with Mema to get that in and we're hoping to have, be able to move on that for the preliminary steps that are required to get the Marion Road cover updated. It's quite, you know, it's posing a significant safety risk as well as an environmental risk. So, so yeah, we're moving forward on that, it's definitely a project that GPW has been targeting for a long time. Went after a couple of other grants without much success, so we're glad that we're able to move on this one. And yeah, Mema was great to work with. So a couple of other things I wanted to highlight quickly is, I can't remember if I said this at the last meeting, but we did, I went after a wayfinding technical assistance grant through the Mass Downtown Initiative for the town of Grafton because we have a lot of plans in circulation that call for wayfinding or signage improvements in some capacity. And it's also across a variety of different sectors, particularly, you know, wayfinding concerning recreation, economic development, you know, open space, history and cultural resources. So what I'm trying to do is basically understand what Grafton needs from a wayfinding signage perspective and how we can kind of merge those efforts and really reach our goals to promote, you know, quality of life and attract more folks, residents and visitors and, visitors and promote, you know, knowledge from a resident perspective. So we're working with Mark Faverman of Faverman Design to basically develop a plan of how Grafton is going to establish a wayfinding and branding campaign. So that's underway, the advisory committee needs to be appointed, which is, so the town administrator is typically the appointing entity based on correspondence that I've had with the state. But I just, I put, I put the folks tentatively on the agenda for the select board, I don't know if we'll necessarily need to do that. I was kind of hoping that Evan, our town administrator, would be able to appoint those folks. So myself being one of the appointees as well as Dave, Dave will be the planning board rep. So I'll keep, I'll keep us posted about that, I'm hoping to have a first meeting by the end of January, early February. I just submitted the open space and recreation plan update to Dave, who is the Open Space Recreation Committee representative for the planning board, so our yearly progress report. So I just wanted to confirm that that is in and happy to, happy to talk about that. We don't have to get into too much this evening, but just wanted to brief the board that that's in and updated. I need to work on the annual report, it's due by the end of the month. So that's underway. And I am working with the state and CMR PC to request an extension for the master plan through the winter of 2024. With the coordination with the master plan working group, it's, a lot more meetings have been required, which is, was just kind of, upon talking to CMR PC, they, they would prefer to have a little bit of a buffer in terms of the timeline. So I'm working on that and I don't think that that will be an issue on the state. We have a grant that we received for the work, that the grant, and the state will amend that and work with myself and CMR PC to, to get that squared away. But just so the board is, is in the loop, that's where we're at. And lastly, the regional housing coordinator that we're in a, so just as an update that the town is in a pilot program with CMR PC for a regional housing coordinator position. We're sharing that position with five other communities, Shrewsbury, Berlin, Auburn, Mendon, and Optin, I believe. So we're, I'm trying to delegate more tasks to that person, including the subsidized housing inventory, requests for inclusion. I'm really trying to get them involved in some of the zoning recommendations or like trying to proactively have them engage with the Affordable Housing Trust to see how we can implement or start to think about implementing some of the recommendations in our housing production plan. Obviously, it's not approved yet, but we want to stay on top of it and if there's anything like a high priority, which we'll be talking about town meeting zoning going forward at the next meeting and probably the following, so I won't get into it too much. But the regional housing coordinator position is, I'm trying to kind of bolster that and get them more involved as much as possible. So happy to answer any questions or talk about anything in more detail, but that is, that is the long-winded summary of what's been going on.
Jim?
Yeah, Jim.
Just a quick question on, you know, I've been reading in the state, across the state, the state revenues are kind of falling off, I think, where they had planned to be and I think the governor had announced that they were doing like budget cuts at the state level. I was just wondering, is there any sort of like risk that like would impact us at all? I, I don't think there would be, but I was just wondering, or like if the town started to see something similar, you know, would we be impacted by anything like that?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, Jim, I, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we probably would ultimately be affected in some capacity, especially as they continue, if they continue to cut. But I, yeah, I would imagine that the first place that we would see signs of that would be, you know, other like funding sources, like we've been super fortunate this year with grants and things like that. So those types of opportunities, you could probably see them being the first things to be targeted. Yeah, I mean, I'll keep my eye out, I know that there's, there's still plenty of like federal money available. And I actually, another thing I have, that I will be attending on January twenty-sixth is a discussion with the town administrator regarding the, the infrastructure bills. So, and there's some opportunities there, so we're hoping to leverage that. They're mainly, it's mainly funding for infrastructure, which we're seeing a lot of. But yeah, you know, I haven't heard too much about the state budget cuts, but I, you know, unfortunately, I do, you know, if it's happening and it's happening as aggressively as, as you've been reading, then yeah, well, you know, we might see that kind of come down the pipe soon-ish, but hopefully not because we've been able to leverage and do a lot of like cool things lately that I would like to continue to do if I can.
Thanks. All right, anything else on staff report? Correspondence, did anybody see anything in the correspondence that caught their eye and they want to talk about?
I don't know whether I want to talk about it, but there's that endless legal stuff. And I think that we as board members don't have to worry too much about that at this point. Is that true?
Yeah, as far as I can tell, we, you know, we looked at, I had looked at it last month and what I could see is the town's connection with that is only the bond that we're holding for Stillwater. And that the, the, someone in that legal case, one of the creditors, I think, someone, I forget exactly which party it is, but someone has a claim on that money. So that ultimately, when we release that bond, it may not go back to who it came from. But other than that, I don't think we have any involvement in that.
Yeah, that's correct, it's, we're really, I've had challenge, I've been experiencing issues with trying to get consensus on how we move forward with this. I have personally never been in a position where I've had to, to do this type of thing, so I am trying to be extra careful about how we proceed. And, you know, I've been in contact with town council, I think that they're still trying to work out the specifics about reclaiming the bond. You know, this is the basics of the road, you know, keeping up with like paving and things, it's on DPW's radar and I've been continuing to stay in touch with them to make sure that, you know, in emergency situations, they're covered. But yeah, that, that particular piece of correspondence is, is something really kind of more focused between the private parties, the contractor who did the work as well and the developer. But yeah, I, unfortunately, I don't have a great, a significant update compared to the last time we spoke about the bankruptcy declaration, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to move forward and start the process. Soon.
Anything else on correspondence? Do we have any reports from planning board representatives on town committees and CMR PC? Apparently not. Do we have any other items which may lawfully come before the board?
Don't think so.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Seconded.
Moved in second that this meeting be adjourned. Mr. Hassinger.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins votes aye, motion carried, we unanimously, we are adjourned.